That a number of other cathedrals are doing what they're doing now. And secondly, Alton Towers, who are providing lateral flow testing, not only for their own staff, but also for communities in their area. And I think those are the sort of examples of that Staffordshire spirit, to all do what we can to make sure that we're keeping each other safe and that we're getting that vaccination programme going as quickly as possible. And it would be wrong of me not to also comment as the Cabinet member for economic development, that that vaccination programme not only lets us all get back to our normal lives, hopefully to a large extent later next year, but also it allows our businesses to get back to work. And we're particularly concerned to make sure that our businesses can reopen fully as soon as possible and that our employees, particularly the ones that are still furloughed or maybe worried about their jobs and that they have that worry lifted as well. So that progress is really welcome. And I'm sure everyone will want to continue to do their part, whether they've had a vaccine or not, to continue following the rules and keep one another safe and hopefully crucially help us all get back to normal soon.
Thank you, councillor White, a couple of excellent examples there. So this is an update report of the situation with the local outbreak control board. I'd just like to conclude by paying tribute to our district and borough colleagues on the local outbreak control board. They are senior representatives from across district and borough councils in Staffordshire. It's a cross-party group, including councillor Charlotte Atkins, the leader of the principal minority group on Staffordshire County Council. We're working well together to identify those really important points for the residents across Staffordshire. And together we continue to deliver. And I think it's a remarkable tribute to the work of the districts and borough councils that we are cooperating in the way that we are. And I'm really grateful for that effort. So ladies and gentlemen, that is for noting. We're moving on now to agenda item number seven, which is Staffordshire Means Back to Business. Councillor White, we're with you.
Thank you very much, Leader. And this is the latest in our, in our now rolling reports on the activities that we're undertaking to support businesses in Staffordshire. As we go through the Covid crisis, it's focusing on our use of the latest round of government funding to support local businesses who are affected by the pandemic. And the efforts that we're making in terms of using these grants is to try and find the things that other people aren't doing. So there are many, many very helpful schemes that are administered by central government. And there are other initiatives that are being taken by other local authorities and other organisations. And what we're endeavouring to do is to find the things that others aren't doing and to try and fill those gaps. And we've got, we've got three things that we are looking to do with our latest round of funding. But crucially, we're looking to do them with others as well. So the bulk of the latest additional restrictions grant went to our colleagues in district and borough councils. And what we've done is we've put together some programmes that they can also contribute if they, if they feel that it will achieve best value for their local citizens, to do more for people in Staffordshire by working together. So the details of those programmes are in front of you. But in summary, the first of those, and I'm particularly excited about this, and I was pleased, Leader, that you highlighted it in your opening remarks, is a project to fund up to 500 new apprenticeships for Staffordshire for 16 to 24-year-olds who've been affected by the pandemic and find themselves out of work at the moment. This is, this is an area that's a particular concern around the country. It's been difficult, particularly for smaller businesses, to get apprentices into, into their organisations during the pandemic. And this scheme will provide help, both in terms of salary and in terms of funding training. The Staffordshire County Council element of it will be a half a million pound contribution, which will support a wage contribution of £5,000 per apprentice for 100 apprentices. Each of our districts may contribute to up to 50 apprentices for their area, which, as we have eight districts, will bring us up to the 500. And the, the support there, if, if all of the districts come together on that, we'll run into the millions. And we'll also be able to benefit from top-ups from central government funding of £3,000 per apprentice on top of that. So it's a really significant package for any small business that would like to take on apprentices, but is struggling with the, with the funding for that at the moment. The second of the three schemes is a nil-cost training scheme for employers. And this is aimed at businesses that want to retrain or upskill their employees. There's a lot of concern that during the, during the Covid crisis, that businesses may not be able to invest in that training and development. And we want to help them to be able to do that. It may be for any purpose at all. So it may be to adapt to the changes that are necessitated by the pandemic. But it may be for other reasons as well. It, it's really about allowing businesses to improve the skills of their staff, to make their businesses more efficient and to make Staffordshire PLC a more highly skilled place with a workforce that's fit for the future. Those grants are of up to £5,000. And that's matched by funding that's available through the, what's called the ESF Skills Hub. So it is up to £10,000 of training funding per, per employee. And that is a scheme that, again, is open to our partners in district and borough councils to also join on to and could support up to 400 businesses with up to a million pounds' worth of funding in its totality. The final scheme is one of, a number of schemes that we and others have put together, which is, which is grant funding. It's, it's something that colleagues will have seen before in other forms, grant funding for businesses that have been affected by the pandemic. But in this case, it is grant funding that is focused on adaptation and innovation. So businesses that have seen changes as a result of the pandemic, again, that may be challenges in their businesses, but it may also be opportunities that they've identified where they need some help to make some changes in their business. And we can provide a grant of between £2,000 and £5,000 to cover expenditure that allows them to adapt and innovate. So those are the three schemes. And I hope colleagues can see the purpose behind those. It is very much focused on skills and innovation. And I think that is, that is an area that we ought to be in the business of helping our businesses to, to do more in. In terms of the ask, and I know, Leader, you'll, you'll be keen for me to detail the recommendations to Caverns in the ask, there are two. So firstly, is that the Cabinet approves an £862,000 contribution towards the schemes that I've outlined. And the second is that you delegate authority to me and to the Director of Economy, Infrastructure and Skills to deliver those and to, to adapt those in light of future changes in terms of grant funding, if we have additional opportunities to enhance those. And with that, I'll hand back to you, Chair, and very happy to answer any questions from colleagues.
Thank you, councillor White, some good news there. So councillor Jessel.
Thank you very much, Leader. And thank you very much, councillor White, for a very comprehensive presentation of this report, which, as you say, Leader, is actually very good news. And we're all in dire need of some good news. This government has given unprecedented support to businesses. And I think schemes like this enable us with local knowledge to actually add value to those schemes. And I think this is what these do. We know the economy locally, we know where the gaps are in the economy. And these schemes are helping to fill those gaps, but actually build for the future, to help companies adapt and use innovation to not only survive, but to thrive in the post-Covid economy. And I thank councillor White for all the work and his team do in not only coming forward with ideas, but working with district and borough colleagues, because together we can deliver so much more. So I'm more than happy to second the proposals put before us. I think it's brilliant news and just shows that we're prepared to put the effort, the imagination and the drive into the Staffordshire Means Back to Business logo. It really does mean this. And I think this is excellent news and one of a series of excellent news. We've had previous schemes and I'm sure we will have further ones in the future. But this is to put us on the right track. And two, we're all very good at thanking the NHS, thanking teachers, quite rightly so, for all the efforts that they put in, the police, et cetera. But what we must do is thank those people who are keeping our economy going at the moment and actually thanking those people, those small businesses, medium pieces, businesses, on whom we all rely for our future wealth and wellbeing. So thank you very much. And as I say, more than happy to second the proposal.
Thank you, councillor Jessel, councillor Sutton.
Cheers, thank you, thank you, thank you, Chairman. I particularly welcome all this, all this paper. But I just wanted to emphasise particularly the little bit about the Staffordshire 500, the support for the apprenticeships. Young people seeing that they have opportunity for the future is really important. And this will really add and help, help, help that. People tell me how much they value good quality apprenticeships, but they're not always available in, across the whole spectrum of work. So I think this will go a good way to helping and assisting for that and ensuring that some of our young people really have the opportunity to take on a really good apprenticeship going forward. So I really welcome this. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Price.
Thank you, Leader. And firstly, thank you councillor White and to the officers for that excellent document. As we know, long after the pandemic is done, businesses are absolutely key in keeping the economy going, particularly through the pandemic and long beyond that, is absolutely key for this authority. To that end, I just wanted to mention as well that Pets for Home will be moving into Stafford Borough and within the county council. This site is on the back of the Red Hill site at junction 14 of the M6, which the county council have invested significant amounts of money in getting that site up and running and having that investment going into the area. And this is absolutely key at the moment, keeping our economy is absolutely key. I want to keep investing in the council, particularly in Staffordshire as well, which will generate over 800 jobs, many of them high-class jobs as well. And that is absolutely key, that businesses like that are fully supported within the county council. And shows the work that we as a county council are doing to make sure that we are keeping the economy growing and going within our own authority. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price. Some of your message got lost there slightly with a connectivity issue, but I think the gist of it. Councillor Sutherland.
And if I may, thank you councillor White. It is good news and much needed good news, and I thank you for that. I'm delighted that we've been able to respond so quickly and across what I believe are the key areas. The training for employees at nil cost to them, I think that's vital. The small businesses, financial support to, so that they can thrive at this stage of recovery is vital. So timing perfect and really great news. So, well, I'll support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, councillor McMahon.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor White, I've fully and unreservedly support this. It has been the case that the younger generation have made a huge sacrifice to protect those who are older and those who are clinically vulnerable over the last few months. And this, this proposal is in recognition of that. And, and, and those who have made the sacrifice, who take the opportunities that you offer, it will be richly deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to councillor White, if you'd like to sum up and then just refer us to the recommendations, which you've already read. But thank you.
No, sorry. Thank, thank you, Chair, and thank you colleagues for the comments. So I'll just touch on two of them. Firstly, firstly councillor Price, well done for getting your crowbar out to get the, get the news in of the incredibly welcome investment that Pets at Home are making in Stafford. That is a transfer of a site from Stoke-on-Trent where, where 450 jobs are moving. But the same number of jobs again are being created because of the growth that businesses experiencing and the site that, that we have helped as a county council to bring forward is big enough to allow them to accommodate that growth. And it is a head office site, and so there will be many highly skilled jobs there. And I hope many apprenticeships as well, which, which very much fits with the, fits with the topic we're discussing today. The other, the other comment I'll just touch upon is councillor McMahon's point. He is absolutely right. Young people have paid a big price to protect the older and more vulnerable members of our society through the restrictions that have been put on them. And it is important that in every way that we can, we repay that and that we invest in their futures. And I think that this is a good example locally of, of what the public sector, local government can do to help with that. In terms of the recommendations, I, I have read them already. But, but in brief, I would ask you colleagues to approve the £862,000, £1,000 of funding towards these schemes and delegate the authority for their administration to myself and the Director for Economy, Infrastructure and Skills. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor White. You've heard the recommendations, all those in favour?
Aye.
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 Any against? Any against? In that case, the recommendation is carried. Thank you very much indeed, councillor White. And thank you to your team for all the efforts that they are doing. It's really appreciated. Moving on then to agenda item eight, which is protecting Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation for Future Generations. Councillor Wilson, we're with you.
Thank you, good morning. Canwick Chase is one of Staffordshire's glories, 1,300 hectares of woodland, river valleys and heathland in an area of outstanding natural beauty, home to so much important flora and fauna that it's a site of international significance. People visit every day for a wide range of leisure activities. And by 2026, we expect Canwick Chase to receive 3 million visits a year, with most of those people arriving by car. Staffordshire County Council has a legal and moral duty to protect Canwick Chase Country Park's vulnerable wildlife and landscape so that our children and grandchildren will enjoy it in the same condition that we do today. We want to balance that duty with maintaining open access. And visitors should understand that even with the best of intentions, almost everything that they do, whether it's dog walking and rambling, cycling or horse riding, potentially has an adverse effect, which we have to manage. So it's in that context that today we consider a proposal put forward by the Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation Partnership, the joint body of local councils that receive money from house builders plus landowners such as ourselves. Over the next 15 years, the SAC partnership wants to spend £7.8 million of money from housing developers on conservation work on Canwick Chase. That includes improving trails and weigh signs and providing conservation education with schools and with children's groups and on the chase itself. It also includes a car parking strategy across all the landowners on the chase with the intention of reducing footfall where the landscape and wildlife are most vulnerable and increasing parking capacity in the more robust locations. Inevitably, initiatives such as this take a long time to bear fruit. And these are decisions to be taken now so they can be implemented over the next 15 years and the benefits seen and felt into the 2040s and beyond. So with that, I recommend that Cabinet considers the proposed mitigation plans for Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation, agree the recommended approach and proposed scheme of delegation as follows. One, operational delivery to be overseen by the Assistant Director for Culture, Rural and Safer Communities. And two, agreement of proposals, appraisal, feasibility study outcomes for Chase Road and Markwys Drive by delegated decision by the appropriate Cabinet member in consultation with Deputy Chief Executive and Director for Families and Communities. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much indeed. Colleagues, are there any observations or questions regarding this report? Councillor Williams, if you could lead off, please.
Thank you, Chairman, hello, members. The ecology of Canwick Chase is obviously under threat and doing nothing may cause irreparable damage to this delicate ecosystem. Being local to the area and working on it and exercising on the chase itself, I've observed the changes in the area and I've seen some of the damage caused accidentally and deliberately from both fire and inappropriate intrusion. Even the area of the Shell Hill Common situated within the AIMB, which I personally have helped to preserve, being a member of the Shell Hill Common Committee, has been damaged by people walking and riding motorcycles over these vulnerable natural habitats, straying from the prescribed walking areas, littering, having fires. Mister Chairman, trained qualified ecologists back this proposal. Other political and environmental groups back this proposal. And the majority of my constituents who have spoken to me personally back this proposal. This is a plan to save and invest in Canwick Chase now and for generations to come. This is a difficult choice, but I believe it demonstrates the strength of this Conservative administration to do the right thing, keeping Canwick Chase safe and still accommodating the large number of visitors who enjoy this area throughout the year without permanently and irreverently damaging it as much as possible. This is how we save Canwick Chase. I do have one question for councillor Williams, and that is, what are the likely costs going to be involved for parking in the areas that we're proposing to charging? Are they in line with other areas and other authorities? And are there any dispensation schemes available? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Wilson, would you rather I bring you back in the end, at the end, or deal with each question as they arise?
Yeah, I'll wait till the end, if that's all right, please.
Councillor Jessel.
Thank you very much, Leader. I don't apologise for the fact that with climate change being in my portfolio, that actually I'm going to couch what I'm saying in terms of that bigger agenda. We all know that human activity on a global and has been demonstrated with this report on a local basis is damaging our environment. If we carry on as we are, we are going to destroy Canwick Chase. And I think pretty well everybody, even those who have objected, do recognise that we need to manage Canwick Chase in a different way. If we don't, it will end up being what I would call a sandy wasteland, which nobody wants to see. In terms of climate change, we've all got to accept the fact that we have to change what we do. We cannot carry on as we are. And actually, for many people, they're relatively small changes. When you look at all the objections that have been made, they can be categorised as, I want to be able to park in the same informal car park and I want to be able to use the same paths. We know, as you look at Canwick Chase, there are so many informal paths which are damaging sensitive parks, damaging the flora and fauna. And we cannot continue like that. So what this report is about is actually asking people to make relatively small changes in what they do to preserve a beautiful area for the future, for future generations to enjoy. And I think it's a well-balanced report. It's still accommodating people who are disabled, blue badge. Drivers will still be able to access car parking free. There are still free car parks. So I think on the whole, councillor Wilson and her team have achieved a really good balance of moving forward and improving the environmental management of Canwick Chase and actually still allowing all those people, and a figure of 3 million is anticipated, to have that access, that ready access to a beautiful environment. So I think this report is well-balanced. I think we all have a responsibility to actually look at ourselves and say, we all need to make slight changes in what we do, whether it's relative to Canwick Chase, whether it's relative to not wasting electricity, water, changing, you know, the number of times we use a vehicle. There are all going to be those changes that we need to make to life. I very much support this. I think it's well-balanced and well-deserved, and I am more than happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jessel, councillor Sutherland.
Thank you, and good morning, one and all. If I may, thank councillor Wilson for this report and also endorse what my fellow Cabinet colleagues have just said. I'm going to talk about myself for two minutes, if you'll indulge me. I live within five minutes' walk of the Chase and have enjoyed the Chase since 1970. But over the years, I've seen more and more visitors using the Chase and the facilities that have been added over the years. This is wonderful. I feel privileged to live with what I call within the jewel of the crown for Staffordshire. As with anything or anywhere that's well-used, it's evident that this needs careful managing. I'm sure all my locals want to protect this fabulous facility for future generations. But with the best will in the world, activities on the chase, have you said, councillor Wilson, can cumulatively have an adverse effect, which has to be for our future generations. This plan is about protecting the Chase. It will take time to achieve and will result in much-needed additional parking and better walking trails, again, something that is desperately needed. So for me, this is about saving Canwick Chase for our future generations, and you have my support for this. Thank you for bringing the paper today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sutton.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Leader. Can I start by thanking Mrs Wilson for her presentation of the detail of this paper and the associated appendices? I'll start with an explanation that part of my division is covered by the Canwick Chase Area of Outstanding Natural Beauty, but it doesn't cover any part of the Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation. I am and have been for many years a keen walker and have walked all over the UK, in Europe and on many occasions on the Chase. I've walked the Staffordshire Way, which traverses the Chase. So I'm very much in favour of people having access to the great outdoors, but I have also seen firsthand the damage to the landscape that visitors can inadvertently cause. So it's important that legislation and how that is implemented creates a balance between access and conservation. This balance will vary with how significant the scientific significance that an area has. The Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation being very significant therefore requires the balance to fall more towards the protection of the area. The Chase is a green lung within Staffordshire, and we need to ensure it's there for future generations. The paper highlights the legal and moral duties under the Habitat Regulations 2017 that the Canwick Chase Special Area of Conservation Partnership have. This I see as the basis for this paper. There is no doubt that vehicle and subsequent pedestrian and cycle access to the most sensitive areas of the special area to the most sensitive areas of the special area of conservation have a detrimental impact on it. And there is a duty on all to prevent this happening. Vehicle pressure is only going to increase and the impact it has on these scientifically significant sites will therefore increase. Therefore, it is essential that if Cannock Chase is going to remain its special area of conservation, plans need to be in place to redress the balance. I believe that these proposals set the basis to protect the chase but maintain access for all people to the chase. The ability for people to be able to access the great outdoors, in my view, is essential. It has a positive effect on people's mental wellbeing, something that many of the emails have been copied into references. Many of the emails have been copied into raised the concern that people's ability to access the chase will be reduced and thus will have a negative impact on people's mental wellbeing. I can see nothing in these documents that will stop people accessing Cannock Chase, getting the fresh air, taking a walk and being at one with nature. But what it will help to do is what there is a legal and moral duty to do, that being to protect the Cannock Chase Special Area of Conservation and try and mitigate the unintended effects that visitors have and the likely increase in those visitors over time. And of course, these proposals are not just about access and car parking. It's about improving trails, weigh signs and interpresentation boards and carrying out conservation education in schools, all of which are fundamentally important to Cannock Chase. Mr Chairman, I support these proposals. They are great for Cannock Chase Special Area of Conservation. They are great for the area of outstanding natural beauty and they're great for Cannock Chase. So today I will be supporting all the recommendations and I will be voting to ensure the future of Cannock Chase and in particular that the Cannock Chase Special Area of Conservation is protected and that the negative impacts of visitors are mitigated against, but that access is allowed and encouraged. I'll be voting to ensure that Cannock Chase Area of Outstanding Natural Beauty and the Special Area of Conservation is there for the generations that follow us. Mr Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor McManon.
Thank you, Leader. It's very difficult to follow on from councillor Sutton. I thought that was an excellent account of the position. I'm a resident in Cannock Chase. Me and my family walk and cycle the chase on a regular basis. And as a portfolio for health and wellbeing, I fully endorse the fact that the chase is great for one's health and for one's wellbeing and for getting out and seeing nature and exercising. I think that councillor Wilson's proposals are, in short, proportionate. They're proportionate in that they allow us to enjoy the chase as we have up until now, whilst at the same time preserving the chase. Chase for future generations. When I look at my
There've been a lot of very passionate comments there from colleagues and it's comforting, I hope, for people who will be affected by these proposals to see that the people who are making these decisions are local to the chase, people who live within walking distance and people who live a very short distance away if they're coming by car. And I'm probably one of the people who's furthest away. Because I live near Burton, so I'm about 15 miles away from the chase. But it's been a part of my life since I was 10 years old when I went on a school weekend Outwards Bound trip from Burton to the chase. And my first memory of it was being pushed in a snowdrift because it was a February visit. It was very cold and snowy and one of my supposed friends decided to push me in the snow and I had freezing cold walk across the chase, which put me off for a few years, but I've been going back for about the last 20 on a regular basis because it is a beautiful natural environment. My wife and I enjoy it thoroughly. And I'm looking forward to introducing my baby son to it when he's old enough to appreciate it himself. And I think the points that have been made by others about preserving the natural environment are very important ones. I've noticed the changes in what is an ancient landscape over my time visiting the chase. It is deteriorating and I think it's fair to say perhaps that it's being loved to death by people who really enjoy experiencing the natural environment, both people from close by and people from further away. It is a huge point of attraction for people to come to Staffordshire. And we want to encourage people to carry on doing that, but in a way that preserves the essential character of the chase. It is an internationally significant site of scientific interest. If you look at the sites that that ranks alongside around the world, it is quite an eye opener. And I think it will help people who maybe have looked at some of the changes to arrangements and don't like that change. And I do respect that, as I'm sure all colleagues do. Change is often unwelcome. It means you have to do things differently. I think particularly if you have vulnerabilities, disabilities, etc., it is concerning. But I do encourage people to look in detail at the actual proposals rather than making assumptions because the disability access is, I think, enhanced by these proposals. There is significant investment in trails, for example, for disabled visitors. I believe that by the end of the scheme, there will be around 500 free parking spaces. So although there will be charging for parking spaces in some areas, that is an enormous number of free parking spaces. But that's to stray away from the main point, which is it is protecting Cannock Chase, an internationally significant jewel in our crown for future generations to come. And I do have a question, councillor Wilson, and it's to my final point, which is that our arrangements for how people visit the chase, parking arrangements, etc., we've made them in good faith in the proposals. If we agree to them today, they will be implemented in good faith. But I would like to ask you whether you will keep them under review. Because we can keep those arrangements under review and we can adapt things if we need to. Unlike the chase itself, which, if it dies, it's gone forever. And I think that really is the point and it's why I will be supporting these changes. I thank you and the professionals who have prepared the report for their thoroughness in presenting it to us as a cabinet of local people who care passionately about the chase and want to do the right thing. And I am convinced that we are doing the right thing. So thank you and I'll be pleased to support this, but I'd also be pleased to get your comments on the specific question that I have. Thank you, councillor Wilson. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Wilson, we're back with you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody for their comments endorsing the proposals that we have before us today. Just to go through some of the answers to some of the points that were raised, there will still be around 50 free parking locations across the chase with 500 free spaces. There'll be more parking capacity than ever before. Disabled access will be maintained and there will be investment in improving the existing disabled access trail. And just to sort of comfort people who are in any doubt, blue badge parking will remain free on all of our car parks. And none of this is to be funded by taxpayers. So those are the answers to some of the questions. In answer to councillor Jessel's point, we do have to change in order to save the chase, don't we? Because otherwise, people who drive there will deteriorate areas of the chase that are very, very sensitive and they're internationally known for the wildlife that they have on them. To answer councillor Sutherland's point, yes, we are using the chase and we are loving the chase to death. And this can't be allowed to happen. To answer councillor Sutton's question about alternatives, there is no substantive alternative that I have seen, nowhere. So we have listened to the experts and we've researched this proposal and come to this decision after many, many months of deliberation. And that isn't to be underestimated. And yes, to councillor McManon's comments, we are being proportionate in allowing people to enjoy the chase and our planet. This is the right thing to do. I'm pleased that everybody on the Cabinet is so passionate with the chase, that there are local people on this Cabinet who absolutely love the chase, as I do. And yes, we will keep the parking under review. This project is 10 to 15 years. We're not even at the very beginning of it yet. Nothing will happen until 2022 at the earliest. But by the end of this 10 to 15 years, there will be ample parking. There'll be 500 spaces and there'll be around 50 car parks for people to enjoy the chase. So I'm really grateful for your support and I hope that you will agree with this report and pass it this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Wilson. For my own part, I've enjoyed the chase over the past 26 odd years since I moved to Litchfield. I live in Litchfield. I've done many orienteering events on Cannock Chase. So if there are some signs going up to stop me on those orienteering events, I'd be grateful. But I just want to rehearse the title of this report because it's really important to remind ourselves why we are here this morning and the decision we are making. The key word here at the start of it is protecting Cannock Chase Special Area of Conservation for future generations. So it is vital that we recognise the ambition that sits behind this, the long-term goals that we seek to attain. And so, ladies and gentlemen of Cabinet, you've heard councillor Wilson read the recommendations. Councillor, hold on a second. Councillor Williams, would you like to second that?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, I'd like to second that proposal to save Cannock Chase. And I think this is the best way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, Chairman.
Any against? It is carried. Thank you very much indeed, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on then to agenda item number nine, which is decision taken by Cabinet members under delegated powers. There is one, that's a decision made by the Cabinet Member for Children and Young People in approving the proposals for the usage of the COVID-19 Winter Grant Scheme. Next item on the agenda is the Forward Plan of Key Decisions. We have in February of 2021 and all February 2021 until I say otherwise, in public, Support of Communities Update and Delivery Plan 2122, brought to you by councillor McManon. The Staffordshire History Centre National Lottery Heritage Fund Round Two Submission, brought to you by councillor Wilson. Implementation of the updated Staffordshire County Council Education Infrastructure Contributions Policy, brought to you by councillor Price. The Digital First Update and Plan for the Digital Principal, brought to you by councillor Sutherland. Climate Change Action Plan, brought to you by councillor Jessel. SEND Strategy, brought to you by councillor Price. Integrated Performance Report 2020/21, Quarter Three, brought to you by myself and councillor Sutherland. In private in February, we've got the Specialist Education Provision for Peoples with Education, Health and Care Plans, aged 11 to 19 years, brought to you by councillor Price. Then also in private is the Waste Disposal Arrangements in the North of Staffordshire from 2025, brought to you by councillors Deville and Jessel's busy meeting in February. Moving on to March of 2021, we've got the Capital Programme for Schools, brought to you by councillor Price. Highways and Transport Capital Programme 2122, brought to you by councillor Williams. In private in March, we've got Reprocurement of the Household Waste Recycling Centre Contract, brought to you by councillors Jessel and Deville. And then moving forward to April, we've got the Integrated Performance Report 2020/21, brought to you by myself and councillor Sutherland. And then finally, in April 21, we've got the recommissioning of the care home services, brought to you by councillor McManon. That is the Forward Plan of Key Decisions. Agenda item 11 is Exclusion of the Public. I move that the public be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business which involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in the paragraph part of Part One of Schedule 12A, as amended, of the Local Government Act 1972, indicated below ISO move.